All right, so maybe we want to address the board on a non-agenda.
We have Steve Ledden.
Steve Ledden, 100 Dundee Avenue, 100 yards south of the Club Ride Out. There's no ticket. Some of you have seen me before, years later. Here I am again with this onerous duty of speaking to you for noise complaints from Club Ride Out. I was hoping the new chief would be here. A couple of years ago, I got two signed complaints, went to the judge, got $10,000 back on the fine. Then I approved three separate tickets, went to the liquor commission where the judge bundled them all together. This was three distinct horrible, horrible days and nights for me, listening to this constant low-frequency noise, getting over a headache, my renters pounding on my ceiling demanding I take care of this. The judge put them all together, threw them out because of semantics, because plainly audible was not clear enough. Really plainly audible was not clear enough. There used to be three complaints, one of the ladies died, she was on Castle Avenue. The other man apparently gave up and just sucking this up from Mr. Benitez. We spoke before and Mr. Miller said he would like a new ordinance to be redrafted and approved to specify the rest of the rendering managing noise in the ultraviolet frequency range. I have two questions, I guess, I'd like to know if anything has been done about this? Or am I just going down the same road that I've been going through for years and years? Doing everything I can from this body that they tell me to do? And here I am again, it was Friday night, not Saturday, Friday night, all night, horrible headache, it's unhealthy. And Saturday, he has a party with the same amount of people as five. That shows me that he knows how to turn it down, and he does not. Again, I have two questions. One is, is there, has there any work been done on the semantics of the ordinance? So his lawyer cannot argue against this and get my future tickets thrown out. And secondly, please, if this was your house, what recourse do you have? I've tried everything, I've spoken at so many of these meetings, it's been in the paper, what do I do? Apparently, the police do not have to come into my house anymore because new chief obviously understands that if it's noisy outside, it's noisy inside. What would you do if you were in my position? And has anything happened to solidify the language in the ordinance? Please.
Is that a ticket that just was issued?
Friday.
Friday.
Yep.
Horrible, horrible.
Because obviously, it's been in a long time.
Before the board points in time, so I'm not suggesting that.
I have.
Your problem is valid, it's a business. But seriously, we worked with owners of that place, we may have, from all we've helped, cooperated with all, every demand we put before them, so I, I don't know why it's.
Can I give you an example of this cooperation? The last meeting I went to, we spent $20,000 on acoustics on the north side of this building and the west side of this building, it's a cornfield and a raws. It has nothing to do with my issue. It's the exact opposite of where my house is.
Well, I don't know why it would have only done any sort of soundproofing and a portion of the.
Because it has a banquet hall and it would make better music inside perhaps. A quick, one-minute click on some of his links in there, what's going on on those party nights, and you would understand completely. How can, how can this noise be stopped from hitting my house? It's also proven that it's amplified in some dwellings. So it's not only loud outside, but it's louder in my house, it's in my kitchen, it's in both my bedrooms, it's in my bathroom. This is not right. I've been a resident for twenty-some years.
No, I agree.
We'll meet with the police chief and see if he's got any recommendations on this, we'll let you know. Thank you for running the tour of town.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jason Schultz?
I just wanted to address a little quickly, I have, I emailed everyone of the trustees with some concerns that my dog and my neighbors had any discussion about the potential closure of Washington Street. I know that they'll vote at his next meeting, but I didn't want to hijack anybody's meeting next time. I know it's going to be busy and we're going to be having a lot, a lot of people. I just wanted to ask you, please, take a look at the concerns list that I emailed you. I'm willing to talk anytime that you guys have time. I'm available weeknights after 7:30 most nights, Mondays earlier. I just, I really feel like the concerns need to be addressed, that we're going to be forward with this because they're concerns from myself and, these are two of my neighbors. You know, this is Carol Burke, she's a second-generation owner, lived here all her life. I'm Jason Schultz, I'm the second-generation owner, lived here all my life, same house. And when Washington Street was closed, Van Buren took an incredible amount of traffic, more speeders, more trucks, me and my dog almost got ran over on multiple occasions, simply crossing the street to get to the sidewalk. And we're really concerned about not just our street, but I've talked to people in other areas of the town. And I'm just not seeing outside of the board where there's a lot of support for this idea from either business owners or residents, and I'm seeing a lot of concerns. And it's not that we're afraid of change, I think all of us want change. We want the downtown area to have its face lift, we want to go down there and see new businesses moving in and, and, and the business community Friday. But we think that it's not the right way to do that, to permanently close down one of the only north-south venues to travel through the village. I, I know one of the pluses is seen as moving more traffic to River Street, but the fact of the matter is, and I haven't seen this considered, myself, my neighbors, everyone that I've talked to that travels through this town does not use River Street for multiple reasons. And they won't use it, Water Street closed, they'll use Van Buren. I've already talked to a bunch of them who've said that, people who live in town, people who used to live in town, people who live around here. It's an inconvenient street to take, it's inefficient for where you're going, it ends in a T, it's got a big, a big term in the middle of it. It doesn't go that far before you have to snake through other roads. And coming down Van Buren, there's a long stretch of road with no stop signs, and I'm not proposing that we put one up, but, I mean, unless we're going to put up speed bumps, which I don't think anybody wants because then that just damages our vehicles, then we've, we're going to consistently be faced with this, with the increased traffic, increased speeders, increased speed trucks, and it's becoming more dangerous. And for some of us that have lived here for forty-plus years, it just doesn't seem right. While I know you take Van Buren quite a bit to get from your house to, to your shop, so I don't know if you've noticed this or not, Curse, that I know you used to live on the street, I don't, I don't know what you're oppressing ones with the traffic on the street, but we're concerned that it's not just going to impact us and the street. But we've talked with some of our neighbors who have said, and myself, that we like it, enjoy, we enjoy attending the events downtown, the Oktoberfest I went to with my nephews and some of the other events in the downtown area. And when River Street is closed, if Water Street is closed, now East Van Buren is the only north-south street between Route 25 and the river. And it makes things that much worse when people are parking there for those events and you can't get two cars by each other while there are cars parked on stretches of that street. And a couple of the people that I've talked to have said they like attending those events, but if it's a nightmare to get to and from them, they, they can't foresee doing that as often anymore. So these are some of the things that I'd like you guys to consider, I'd really like you guys to think some thought, and please, 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 by all means, call me, email me, send me a text message. I'm more than happy to talk to any of you at any time, after the meeting tonight, sometime during the week, whatever.
Thank you. I got your email though, and I hadn't got a chance to respond to you, but I would like to get together and talk to you.
Oh, that's great.
About some of these things. Obviously, the board is looking at a lot of issues, and we're going to try and resolve them all. That's why we haven't voted on this yet, because there's still a lot of work to do. So there's, there's a lot of, a lot of the things that you're thinking about, we've been thinking about as well.
Okay.
Just be sure.
Thank you. Chad Smith?
Hi, actually, I've lived here for two years, but my family's actually been, I'm a third-generation. And actually, my parents live right behind your shop. What I'd like to talk about, what Jay said too, is a lot of people, even if they're going to take the left on River Street, they're still going to take a quick left and then get on Water Street and go through. They're not going to go all the way through now for this great plan that everybody's going to go through. People that want to go through are going to find a way to still go around there. So if you're going to block out that road, it's really not going to do anything, besides be more of a hassle and you're going to be creating more traffic through by Van Peter Gardens, which, that's usually chaos on the weekends, there's usually a lot, a lot of activity in the summer. And I mean, like Jay said too, we're all up for fixing the downtown. If you can, just block it on emergency road too, a lot of times we see the cops still go out that way, that's the way that they get out of their lane, get to somewhere if they need to right away. And I think Jay can add a lot of the good things he's sent out, I got this sheet too, and I think he's sent it out to everyone, and I think he has a lot of really good concerns out there. And I know, we were talking about the Dairy Queen owner, that kind of puts a big dent in his business and it seems like to do a lot of changing for, I don't know, it just seems for like one developer is getting all the action. It just doesn't seem.
There's a lot of moving parts to this, and we're looking at all of them. I appreciate your comments, I really do.
Okay, that's, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Well, you gotta sign up to be heard or what?
I'll be able to do it.
So we have your name there, you know, for the record.
George Bauer.
George Bauer?
I'm a property owner in town.
Okay.
Oh. It's probably one of the trustees that told the residents of East Dundee that it's costing $2 million for a traffic light for the gas station on Route 72.
It's not costing the residents anything.
It's not? According to the village administrator, he told me it's costing $2 million.
It's costing $2 million and we got a Federal One state grant for that, that's making the whole thing.
Really? Yeah, I heard that Water Street's a done deal, is that correct?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
I agree with that one.
Well, we got to vote on anything.
From a trustee.
Okay.
Is it a done deal or not?
Nothing's a done deal until we actually vote on it.
I'd like to know how many millions of dollars East Dundee's in debt.
This is not a question to answer period, this is the time for you to make public comments.
Yeah, well, how can we get the information?
Well, you can comment inside the meeting with us and we'll be happy to talk to you.
With the trustees or with you?
The best bet would be to talk to the village administrator and she would have the numbers.
Can I talk to you tomorrow? What time's a good time?
If you leave your contact information, I'll contact you later.
When is the actual vote?
We don't have a term.
I thought it was scheduled for the bank meeting this morning.
No.
Because I don't think a lot of residents know that that's part of the deal, that they're going to close the road. But that's even good for most people I talked to. Like we talked about, that they're closing, because like no information out.
Well, you said that we're closing.
We're closing Water Street.
We don't have a date on the vote because we don't have, we're still.
Well, I was saying, those older people don't even know that that's a suggestion that's going to happen. And the village has only put out a light vote to inform the residents that that is possible.
Well, as somebody who's been fairly active online, that's actually the entire thing they're complaining about, is the closing of the street. So honestly, I, I have yet to see anybody who's like, oh, you're closing the street, I was not aware. That's why, that's exactly what everybody's complaining about.
Well, it's because those are the ones that are.
No one knows about it.
Well, if you want me to vote it.
Yeah, not on Facebook, but I found out about it.
So.
You have to, okay, I found out about it.
I don't address your question here. What happens is, somebody comes to us with a proposal of any kind, right? The board discusses it during meetings in open session, so that every given time, it's posted on the agenda and it's posted on the minutes, and it will tell you what the next steps are going to be. In this particular case, we don't have a date for the next step because we haven't set the meeting because we don't have all the facts yet. We're not going to make a determination on, or a vote on something until we have all the information that we need to take that vote. So there isn't a date now. It's not, and I would say it's probably common knowledge that we'll be having a vote on this, but I can't tell you because I don't know what the date is yet.
I mean, you have all the traffic studies in yet?
We have one traffic study and we have another traffic study that has been done, but we don't have the numbers in yet, so that again is something else that we're waiting for.
And were those done when all the construction and the bridge was closed? Water Street, I mean, that's a kind of.
Absolutely, no, when was done when Water Street was closed?
So it makes it like an inaccuracy.
Not necessarily.
Oh, is it not?
Because King County also has traffic counts on all these streets, and what we're finding is, is that their numbers and our numbers match up exactly.
So even with the bridge closed, you're going to get an inaccurate number?
You're going to, that's why, but that's why we're doing another traffic study, okay?
And then wait until they have done it right?
I'm sorry.
So waste their money having one that's accurate.
Hey, well, we didn't pay for it.
We did.
For the developer.
What grid is it on?
Well, Washington. Well, they made a bridge.
Oh, no, no, I get that.
But that was closed, right? There was no traffic, I mean, how do you get an accurate? Well, when you cut out.
Because the people that are going south on Water Street aren't going all the way down to 72, which I'm right, are they?
No, but if somebody come this way, they come out.
I get that, and again, that's why we're doing another traffic study when there isn't construction and 72 isn't shut down again.
But, I mean, 72 doesn't come here.
Okay. My point is simply, you're absolutely correct, you can look at the traffic study and say, yes, there was construction going on, we decided that we needed to do another traffic study. Because there, I mean, I can't think of anything that would be more fair than that.
That's true.
The traffic study is available on our website. There's a link to all the documents that are publicly, have been publicly released are on our website. So if you want to look at it. But all we're doing right now is rerunning traffic counts, which is not a significant flaw, and we're only doing that because of the comments we received from residents. Because the traffic counts match the traffic counts from IDOT that IDOT did in 2014, we feel very confident that they're closely accurate. So people were driving around the closure of that, that's what was happening. But we had to do the traffic study to use that it was closed, but we're willing to redo the counts again.
Because there's going to be more traffic with the auto building, that's a part of it too, than the DBR.
I think, yeah, this is.
There's going to be a lot more.
This is.
Once that starts happening.
Correct, there, there may be. So these are all, these are all things we're looking at, and as far as when the next steps are or when the next time we're going to vote on that again, I don't have an answer because we haven't set a date because we don't have all the flat tax, because we're still looking at things. So the only thing I would suggest is, just like any other issue that one might be interested in, put more webpages, look at the agenda and see if it's on the agenda. If it is, it is, if it's not, it's not, you'll get noticed that it's up there. Everything that we do is public and transparent and out there for the public.
I know, I've seen Mr. Anderson's posts a lot, and it seems, it seems like it's giving, at least it's on Facebook. It's almost a done deal, but it sounds like we'll reuse posts.
I, I don't reuse posts online.
Yes, well, I wrote the posts. That's never been implied. Because they're going to thought across my mind.
That's.
We're not going to get down in the weeds on that issue here tonight, but everything that we do is out there. I wouldn't, I would not base your facts on what you read on Facebook, and I tell you that about any subject, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm just.
So if you want to, if, I don't know what he's written out there, I haven't read it. I don't, I don't go read all the Facebook comments to make my decision. So if you want the facts on what's coming up and when it's scheduled and what we're going to be talking about, we have to do it in a very public format and we have to put it in the agenda, so I just suggest you do that. If you're not online, it's posted at Village Hall, it's, I believe it's still in this paper. Is it, do you need to do that or?
No, it's.
Never mind. A little bit.
It is at the Village Hall.
The Village Hall, it's posted in the front, right, it's up in the front door. Or if you're in the column, I'll tell you. I can just lock it in. Okay. Anything else on this?
Well, and I think just for everyone's clarification purposes, I think the best source for the information regarding what's going on is the village website, which is East Dundee Avenue. So I think that everyone at this point has access to that. And you can go in there and see exactly what's been decided, what's not been decided, where we are in the traffic studies and all that. Okay?
Okay. Anybody else that wants to speak to us on their public comments?
I'm a public comic that doesn't involve the Water Street.
Well, we weren't really talking about Water Street tonight, so go for it, Tom. John Chakowski, want to give your address?
My name's John Chakowski, I'm with Dundee Foundation Alliance.
Address?
Huh?
You remember your address?
Address?
Address, where do you live, John?
307 East First Street.
Thank you. Just for the record.
Just for the record, got it.
Go ahead.
Okay. We did a program with Dundee Foundation Alliance for Heritage Fund, we did a five-day run. And with the assistance of East Dundee, it was very successful. Thank you for putting us on the webpage, helping us out with the sign, and the law enforcement, George is not here, the law enforcement helping us out as well. So in our gratitude for the Dundee Foundation Alliance, we'd like to argue our key.
Awesome, thank you.
For the administration?
Yeah.
And if you could want to be.
I got one.
You can. And one for the. So we really appreciate that you helped us out, you know, because we're thinking we can do to help out. Because what happens also too, this, this money we gained for East Dundee is going to go to Shop With A Cop. Yeah, we're going to be 173 families this year, so.
Awesome, good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Always glad to help. Okay, last call, anybody else?
Well, I can add a question.
Sure.
Were you guys gonna, were they, were you guys, the first floor, you guys were doing like stores and stuff? I heard that you guys weren't going to do that?
Well, I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Although.
What were you saying? Our, well, yeah, so what the whole condo, and you guys are going to go, in the first floor, are there going to be retail or not? Is there going to be retail?
Well, first of all, it's not a done deal yet, no matter what you read online. We're still going through the motions of, of backfiring and then looking at a bunch of things. I heard that there was a possibility of retail on the ground floor, then I adore that they're not, so I don't know if that's final.
Basically, agreement that the village board is considering doesn't require, at this point, retail to be there, but the developer would still allow for retail if he was able to find a retailer. It's just difficult if you have retail within a condominium building, it's difficult to rent that retail and to sell the condo. So it's not going to be a requirement in the agreement that the village is looking at, but it is a possibility. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
What's that, Joe? Are you pretty sure? No?
Good?
I don't know, I was just going to say, that guy Joe, I don't know, I wasn't at, I'm from the barbershop. Where do you, I don't know, at the barbershop in East Dundee and South Sea of Water Street. And that guy Joe, I wasn't there, that guy Joe, I was like, oh, what do you guys think about working in the retail? That's the first story. Remember, I don't want to be there. And I remember hearing that you guys thought that that was, you guys weren't going to have the, the retail.
So you were approached by Joe to move your store to that building? And at this point, you're trying to confirm if there will be retail on the bottom floor for your opportunity? Or we don't have the answer to that right now?
Yeah, I talked to Jennifer.
Okay.
Sometime, but again, her answer was, maybe not clear, but if you can find a retail tenant in there, then yes. The answer was yes, he was pulling in.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm sorry about that, but he came over and.
Okay.
I don't know. Okay, sorry, I'm not good.
That's okay, no, no problem.
I did have one final question.
Yeah.
How long has this been, like, this project going on for, for you guys to post Water Street?
Well, we've had it on maps and discussions going back to, I want to say 2009, 2010-ish.
So why wouldn't you guys let her buy a token there, when you guys ended up closing down Water Street?
It wasn't actually part of the plan. We actually had a urban development, Vanderwall and Associates, that's an urban development company consultant out of Madison, Wisconsin, that came to the village to do other things. And one of the services that they provided at the time was some options of what we could do with the downtown and reconfiguring it, redeveloping it, basically changing it. And one of the options was, at the time, closing Water Street.
So again, this isn't really a forum for public comment, not for back-and-forth questioning. I can certainly answer your question, but we'll have to do it at a different time. So if you want to get back to me, you have my contact information?
No.
All right, I'll give that to you, and then, you know, we can make contact and I'll be happy to sit down and explain the answers to all these for you.
All right.
All right. Anything else on public hearing, I mean, on public comment? All right. So the next thing we have on the agenda is, there is no public hearing, sorry. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, if I can have a motion, one of the trustees or anything that you'd like to add or subtract to this? Staying on, if I can get a motion on the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve the board meeting minutes dated October 15, 2018. Motion to maintain confidentiality of all closed session minutes previously approved but not released, and see a motion to approve a resolution approving a request for currently to close State Illinois Highway 72 from Illinois Department of Transportation in connection with the annual Dickens and Dundee parade.
Any discussion, can be careful.
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee Sel?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Very good, all business, both of us on a new business, we have a motion on Kate, please.
I'll make a motion to waive our bid and approve the purchase of Grand Salt Farm Incorporated on a purchase order in the amount of $32,500.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Now, this is a firm one, Jeff, so I'll figure it out. That's, that's basically like the budget.
That's correct.
Plus the one purchase.
Plus twenty, yes, we need it.
How much are we currently sitting on?
Pardon?
How much are we currently sitting on?
We've got about a hundred tons of our salt farm. So what we'll do is, we'll fill the salt farm up as quickly as we can, subsequent to financial. Be ready to go for the work.
Okay. Kevin?
Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee Sel?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Okay, Texas, the new business, we use like a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of a negotiated agreement between International Union of Operating Engineers, total 150, and the village of East Dundee.
Is that it?
Very good, discussion?
Yes.
You go for it.
Longevity bonus here, damn it, why do we have those in there? This is crazy.
That was status quo.
Status quo, that's nothing, that's not an answer.
I'm saying that.
It's got to go.
That was a bargain in previous practice.
Yeah, I know, the fact that it's in there is ridiculous. I mean, it's an antiquated power move on the union's part. First off, I need to, I got a question for the lawyer. Is there anyone in State of Illinois that compels a municipality to work or to be governed by a union of any sort or any capacity? All right, then my question would be, if anybody wants to run for mayor of East Dundee, a solid platform would be to get rid of the unions.
Hey, Jeff, I mean, after changing federal law, everything aside, you know, anytime you get a blank bargaining agreement of this nature, you're always going to have to give and take. So if one single issue would somehow draw unnecessary and appropriate attention to it, it works as a little horse trade that gets you to find a deal, I don't think it's.
Anywhere in the private sector where you're going to get a bonus just for showing up, and that's what longevity is, I don't care if it's a hundred bucks, I don't care if it's ten bucks, I don't care if it's a thousand bucks, it's a nonsense item, it's ridiculous. I mean, it's mad. It pissed me off when Frank Caleb was here, and it's pissed me off every year since, so.
All of us are consistent. Kevin?
Trustee Lam?
No.
Trustee Sel?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes. All right, financial reports, you have that in your packet, I have. All right, financial reports, you have that in your packet, I have no report to see a little one for the trustees. Trustee Wood?
No.
Trustee Lam?
I'm like, I'm sure I have some.
I'm sure you do. Circle back if you remember.
That was great.
All right. Trustee Andreessen, Trustee Sal.
No report.
Village administrator.
No.
Village attorney. Village engineer.
No report.
Chief is not here, public works, report, good, building official not here.
I got it.
Finance director. You're killing me, Jeff.
Community thrift store, we needed another thousand dollar sanitation amendment, because there was a bunch of crabs sitting outside the door last night. I didn't change it.
Pretty good, I think that's. Yeah, yeah, but if you don't fix it by tonight, you keep sending it to me.
Cool.
All right, all right. So we are going to read a motion, we're going into a brief executive session, if I could have somebody make this motion to recess.
I'll make a motion that we recess into executive session, close to the public media, the provisions of the Illinois Meeting Act, by I L C S, and this will be concerning litigation and, and, and probable.
Second?
Probably it, second?
Second. Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee Sal?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Yes. All right, I'll take a quick flight, I'll break, and we'll.